Okay, we're gonna start our meeting November 9th, 2020. Should I do attendance?
Yeah, it's typical.
Or I can, Pete, if you like. This is Doreen.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chris, are you recording the meeting?
I am recording for borough documentation purposes.
Okay, so for roll call, we'll skip over Suzanne since she's having issues connecting. Pete Merkel?
Here.
Are you recording?
Me? No.
Mark Watkins?
Here and I'm not recording.
Ralph Touch?
I'm here and I'm not recording.
Colin Boyer?
I'm here.
John Rothenberger? Is John still connecting?
I'm here and I am not.
Yes.
Okay. Tammy Gore?
I am here. I'm not recording.
Andy George?
I'm here and I'm not recording.
All right, we can at least listen, right? You can at least listen.
Craig Conrad?
I'm here and not recording.
And I believe that covers everyone at this point. Oh, wait, no. Ryan Kern?
I'm here, not recording.
I'm here and I'm not recording.
Okay, thank you. And did I see in my?
I can take back over for you.
You did, and I'm not recording.
Okay, thank you. And Jim Meals, he's still not connected?
I haven't seen him come in.
Okay.
Doreen, this is Suzanne. I'm here and I'm not recording.
Okay, thank you Suzanne. Is Chief Stensky connected yet?
Yep, I'm on.
Are you recording the meeting at all, chief?
I am not.
Okay, thank you. Then I think that covers everyone Suzanne.
Let's start with Chief Stensky's on, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, why don't you take it with the police report, please, and then we'll move over to Ryan, okay?
Okay, I just emailed out shortly the police report for October to everyone. They reviewed, that should be in your email boxes. So you'll see all the hard numbers when you see that incidence of note. We had a reported assault involving a gun right on the edge of town that we had responded to in October. That matter is still under investigation. Nobody was injured during that assault, alleged assault. We also responded to several people who were in mental health crisis. Two of them were juveniles, one a female who police were able to help to search and locate her before any harm came to her. And another one was actually a 12-year-old male that we were able to work with and calm down and get into an ambulance and get the help that he needed. So several of those types of incidents. We did have officer Folk was able to conduct 11 commercial motor vehicle inspections throughout our areas of responsibility in October. Only one truck had a lot of severe violations and had to be put out of service. All the other ones were either no violations or a couple minor things. So that was good. And still working on the budget planning and stuff with the Borough Manager. Personnel-wise, all the officers completed their mandatory in-service training that's required by the state. All the officers completed their long gun and diminished light fire in October, so that's done. The physical and background check for officers, you guys approved last month for a part-time position is done. The only thing I'm waiting on now is to get the results of the drug test, which I'll call about tomorrow. They had the other place that we were using historically basically did some kind of quick check on scene and gave us those results. This new place that we went to actually sent them out. So I will follow up the phone call tomorrow and see whether or not we've got any kind of status on that. That's all we're waiting to get him in the lineup here to get him trained and get him working for us. We did participate in several community service-type events around Halloween. All of them were well-received and people liked seeing us there. So that's about what I have for you unless you guys have any specific questions.
Steve, I've been seeing on Facebook that there's been a couple situations with large bangs, very loud bangs in the area. One was reported that it might have been a transformer and the other one was something about a truck whose tire popped. Are those both accurate? Have you heard about?
I can't. Those, I can't tell you about. I know there were several that were reported to us. The truck tire one sounds familiar. There are typically, I think the truck tire one is one that we were actually there's one or two of them that we were called about. If you look on social media, there's several. The ones that we've been called on, we went and investigated. I don't have a rundown for that. But what I'll do, Mayor, I'll review this month's incidents so far and I'll give you a breakdown on the loud boom. But there's no cataclysmic event that I'm aware of.
Okay. Probably something mundane, but people are really talking about it and I, you know, so pass it along.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's Pete, Steve. I have a question.
Yes.
I had somebody ask me about the oversized and heavy loads coming through Fleetwood.
Yes.
And it really was a good question. You know, we just PNDOT graciously just did a $16 million job on our roads. And now we got this heavy oversized loads coming through. How much longer is this gonna be? And do you think this is taking a toll on our roads?
I haven't observed any effects to the road based upon what's happening. But if you guys recall, this actually started happening when they started constricting travel on 222 for the improvements at 73 and then the roundabout there at Tamarack. I actually had our truck specialist, Officer Folk, stop cars, stop a couple of those immediately when that first started happening because I too saw that's, you know, regardless of what's happening to the road, it's still, it's a little hairy at times with the size of those trucks coming through. So what Tom found was the paperwork, the permits they have issued to go off route, bring them through town, and those permits were issued by PNDOT. I guess they know what nice wide roads we have now. So those loads are life, are lawfully traveling through town. I don't have a timeframe for when they'll be done or when 222 will open up. But I'll check into that and I'll let you know, see if there's any light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah, I know Craig knows those people at local PNDOT. Maybe we could check and say, you know, just you know, to me, why would you send a wide load through this little town? Send them through the construction zone. Why is it such a big deal?
Well, because the construction zone where they're working, the lanes are severely restricted. You could barely fit regular vehicles through there now. These oversized ones definitely would not make it. And I think the alternative actually would take them up 61 across 78 down into Allentown and then back around. So that happened a few times also when our roundabout was being installed. There were times there when there were restrictions on the width of vehicles that could travel that way. What I'll do is I will, when I get off this call, Brandon is the guy, the area guy who's working a bunch of these. You may or may not remember him, but I will send him a text and an email when I get off the call and see if he has any status on when that is. If you recall, Pete, when we were, when we thought that Arch Street was going to be a detour for us, you know, we were working on the possibility of increasing, you know, fixing that street up as well, so, you know, in anticipation of handling some heavier traffic.
And this is Craig. I don't see any wear and tear on the road itself. They put a lot of blacktop down and it was a very high easel count, which is the strength of the blacktop. So I believe we're okay and I think this is gonna be, like the chief said, temporary until 222 is finished. I haven't been up that way for a while, but I have a feeling it could be a little while. But Brandon's a guy to check with and if the chief checked with him, he should be able to get a good answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything else for the chief? Chris, do you and the chief want to talk about at all the the police information that's been out recently with some changes in some neighboring towns, just to address it even briefly?
I think it would be fair to say that Steve and I have been talking about what might happen, but it's very premature in that they're only discussing it actually in real time right now. So we're very aware of the situation.
Okay, keep us posted as that situation develops, okay?
Yep.
Okay, if that's everything for the chief, then chief, you're excused and good luck with your evening. Stay safe and thank you for everything.
Okay, you're welcome. I'll be stepping in here to Topten's meeting and I'll be back in the office for a while. So if any questions come up, feel free to give me a call or a text or something. I'll get right back to you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
You bet.
We're gonna move on to Ryan Kern, please, with the engineering report. Take it away, Ryan.
Hey, sounds good. Thanks Suzanne. We're gonna start with the pool replaster rebid. Mike Eversol from my company is on the call here. And Mike, how about you get going and discuss the rebid for the pool replaster?
So, how's it going, everyone? We are rebidding the project that was put out in March, about a week before everything went down with COVID-19. The plan is to stick with the original scope of work, which was, you know, replaster the entire pool itself. And then we also had a couple unit cost allowances that were also included with the base bid for crack repair and then spore repair as well as needed. Anything that's not used, we credit it back to the borough. And then in addition to that, we also had four alternates as well, mostly dealing with the an upgrade to the finish for the plaster and then a couple add alternates for tile replacement as well. So I believe the purpose of this meeting was really to vote on whether or not you'd like us to proceed with sticking with that scope. And I will let you take away here, Chris.
Correct. So it's the, basically, the, pretty much the same that we did last fall. This is post the 2020 debacle that happened with COVID. And we're looking to authorize BIA to start another bid spec and authorize for bidding. The bids would open, I believe we said, Mike, in, I don't have the paper with me, January? Or February, February, I believe it was.
Yes, one second here. Let me pull that up.
So basically, if we start now in November, give him the authority to proceed. I believe this was December, we did a pen bid. Bids come in in January and council would authorize in the February council meeting.
Do I have a motion to have the engineering go forward with their rebid package?
Yeah, John Rothenberger will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I can second it. This is Ralph.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ralph was seconding and I think somebody else might have been as well?
That's okay. Ralph can have it.
Okay. So we've got John Rothenberger and we've got Ralph Touch at the second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion on this, Doreen, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch? Colin Boyer?
No.
John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that could be it.
Okay, I believe we've got a quorum in any event. I think Sammy's the only person who's not available, so that motion carries.
I have that scheduled up in front of me. Would you guys want me to read that off to you and just summarize it?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
So we make the documents available basically right after the new year in January, January 4th. Have bids in by early February in time for your February 8th meeting to award. And from there on out, we'd look to have contracts signed in late February with construction start at the beginning of March, weather dependent, of course. But based on the dates I was given, the goal would have us essentially complete by April 30th in time for hopefully everything to be back to normal, well, close to it.
Mr. Eversol, can you supply those dates to Chris directly so that we just have them for Doreen for the minutes, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure. Chris, I think you have it already, actually.
Yep, I have it. I'll send it back out to all the council.
Thank you.
Do you have a budget price for that job?
We actually have actual bid numbers that came in last year.
Oh, yeah. How much?
Let's see, one second. I think the low value was the low bidder was $113,000. And that also included the allowances of $21,000, so they aren't used. You subtract that from $113,000.
So that's to replaster the whole pool?
Correct. It did not include those alternates that I had discussed, which we had a deduct alternate and three add alternates. And I believe I provided you guys with the bid summary back in March. And again, if you need me to resend that, let me know. I can certainly do that.
Thank you. Michael, Ryan, do you have additional information or additional subjects to discuss?
Yes, yeah, I need to get into the main body of the engineer's report then.
Take it away.
All right, so the first item on our engineer's report is the MS4 and Pollution Reduction Plan items. Couple bullet points within that section. We do continue to coordinate with borough staff regarding any annual task items as needed. Regarding Willow Creek Restoration Project, we held a meeting at the end of October with Chris Young and Craig Conrad to review our soil infiltration testing results and whether or not a BMP would be suitable in that location. It did get favorable soil. So now we're gonna be taking a look at what exactly we can do in that area or whether it's rain garden or seepage or whatever it might be. And we'll be coordinating with the borough on that. Christine Milner of my office attended the Berks County MS4 Steering Committee meeting, which was held on October 15th. We posted within our engineer's report here a few links that Borough Council or staff may want to take a look at for educational purposes. The second item on our engineer's report is the placeholder that I keep there for the water treatment plant, the stream realignment. We're just waiting to hear from the borough if and when the borough chooses to do that project. And then the last item on my engineer's report is Arch Street, specifically near Maple. We did receive verbal authorization from the borough to proceed with a limited topo survey that will be happening later this month. The collection of this topography will allow us to take a look at what recommended improvements are feasible for this area and whether or not storm sewers could be installed. We would be looking to do that feasibility study at the beginning of 2021. And that's actually it for the engineer's report unless there's further questions or topics that the council would like to discuss.
So Suzanne, we would need a motion to go with that feasibility study. And Ryan, you have the cost there?
I don't have the cost in front of me, Chris.
Let me look it up.
I have them in front of me if you want me to read them off.
Yeah, please.
Well, the field survey was 2,750 and the feasibility study was 9,725.
Do I have anybody to make that motion, please, to go forward with the feasibility study?
This is for stormwater on West Arch, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the feasibility of what improvements can be made to assist with eliminating surface ponding as well as some of the flooding we had.
I'll make the motion, Pete.
Okay, do I have a second, please?
This is Ralph. I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Mr. Merkel and a second by Mr. Touch. Do we have any further discussion at this time?
I do have one question. Are we gonna get a grant or where is this money coming from? Is it in the budget?
I don't think we know what it's going to cost yet, so that's what the feasibility study will tell us.
Yeah, Colin, this is Craig. Yeah, the feasibility study will tell us what we can do and come up with a preliminary design and preliminary costs. And at that point, then we would like to look into some kind of grant. And I believe there's some out there that would, this would qualify if I understand correctly from BIA. So the first step would be to, you know, make sure it's feasible, that we can do it, what the design would be and what the cost would be. And at that point, then we could go out and look at grants.
I understand that, but the money to do the feasibility study is not a non-frivoligale amount. So where are we getting the money from that to pay for that?
Without it coming out of our MS4 and general budget, right?
Correct. It would go against the MS4, but it's not budgeted, so it would likely go over budget.
We've had so many concerns from our residents about the flooding, though, in recent months and years. I think it's appropriate to consider this so that we can see if we can come down to some sort of solution for this. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, calling the roll and then we'll go from there.
Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
No.
John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that would be it.
Okay, well, as I indicated, that concludes the engineer's report unless there's other topics that I did not have listed that council would like to discuss.
Sounds like you engineers are free to go, Ryan.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike, if you're still on.
Yep, have a good one.
Okay, Chris, I think that we're moving over to the guests to the open phone lines.
Correct, and we only have one guest at this point, and that's Denton.
Hey, Denton. Okay, then we'll move on to Andy George. Okay. Andy, can you take over for the next, the 2021 tax rate resolution and so on, please?
Yes, so this is an ordinance because the tax rate has increased. So in accordance with the changes to the Borough Code, which happened last year, because of that, we have to pass an ordinance. If, I think we did this last year, if the tax rate remains the same or decreases, you can pass the new rate and set it by resolution. So in this case, it's an ordinance because it's going up to 5.7 mils, with the fire tax being the same at 1 mil. But we did advertise and prepare that ordinance for consideration for tonight.
Okay, do I have a motion to go forward with the 2021 tax rate resolution?
John Rothenberger will make that motion.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second, please?
This is Ralph. I'll second the motion.
I've got a motion and a second, please. Do I have any further discussion?
Suzanne, this is Colin. I just have one question. I think I know the answer to this, but we don't have a we don't have a fire department budget. Yeah, is that right?
That is right.
I don't believe that we do have that, but it's not impacting the taxes because the fire tax is separate and not changing.
I can speak to that. This is Mark Crossley. I'm the president of the fire company. I can speak to that budget issue. We are, okay, we put it up to the board for review to the body. It's been reviewed. It's going to be brought up at the November business meeting and voted on there with the anticipation of getting it to the borough sometime in December. That's typically what we do. We try to get the next year's budget to the borough by the end of the previous year. If you want it earlier, just let us know.
Doreen, can you go forward with the call, please, the roll call?
Sure. Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
No.
John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that would be all.
Okay, that motion carries as well.
And I apologize, Mark Crossley. When I recognized Mark's iPhone, I thought it was Mark Watkins calling in with his computer. So I apologize for not recognizing that you were online.
No, that's okay. That's fine. Thank you.
We're a good company because we're both Penn Stateers, so.
There you go.
Suzanne, excuse me, just to clarify that, so that motion was to approve the ordinance that Andy has prepared?
The tax rate resolution, yes.
It's actually an ordinance.
Ordinance, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Andy, with the lease agreement, please?
All right, so we also prepared for tonight for consideration a lease agreement with Kleckner Laux Architects for Suites 208 and 209. It's 2,100 and change square feet, which is the old library space. The lease is 42 months, starts January 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2024. And the rent would actually start because there's a grace period. I think they're doing, you know, some improvements where there's like a delayed move-in. Chris knows more about that. But the payments start on June 1st of next year and it's $1,500 a month with an increase the next year to 1,545 and it increased the following year to 1,591 a month. There is an option to extend for additional 12-year periods, assuming that all terms and conditions are complied with. There is an option to extend, uh, for additional 12-year periods, assuming that all terms and conditions are complied with. Like I said, the tenant will be doing some renovations. There's a clause that says if any asbestos is found that the landlord and the tenant will negotiate to cover and mitigate those costs. But if the remediation costs of that are too expensive, there's an out clause for us. Where we could terminate the lease. Tenant pays for electric, phone, internet cable. Uh, the borough's responsible for the other costs. And there's a provision that allows the tenant to sublet Suite 208 only, not Suite 209 upon the approval of the borough. So those are the cliff notes of the lease agreement. Chris, why, could you remind me why the payments are delayed?
Yeah, so, um, the, the tenant had, the, the new tenant has a lease expiring somewhere else in April or May of next year. So when talking to the finance team, they were okay with, uh, letting them in to come in and start doing some of their, their stuff early. And then we, we locked them in for a three and a half year lease. That was the, the deal there.
So now that we've reviewed the lease agreement, do we have a motion so that we can accept same and move forward?
It's Pete, I'll make the motion.
I've got a motion by Mr. Merkel. Do I have a second, please?
This is Ralph, I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mr. Merkel and a second by Mr. Touch. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, take it away.
Okay, Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay, that would be all.
Okay, Andy, next thing I've got on your list is the mutual agreement with Maiden Creek.
All right, so this is the agreement, uh, where the, the township in the borough agree to share and make available for use equipment, employees, vehicles, um, supplies. And all of that is gonna be coordinated and scheduled upon everybody's mutual convenience. Uh, but it can be used in times of emergency as well. No, no fees going back and forth for like rental charges or anything like that, but if somebody incurs, uh, an out-of-pocket cost, that could be reimbursed. Liability waivers back and forth, so mutual hold harmless clauses, um, in case something goes wrong. So it's a good way to kind of share resources, save money. We've talked about this for, for a couple of months and luckily the Interstate Government Cooperation Act changed recently to allow these to be passed by resolution as opposed to ordinance. So we also have a, a resolution that would need to be voted upon and signed as well tonight. So it would be a vote to execute the resolution, which would approve the agreement. And then a second vote to sign the agreement if approved.
Okay, do we have, uh, a motion to, um, go forward with the, uh, to go forward with the mutual agreement?
I can make that motion, Ralph.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Touch. Do we have a second, please? Anybody?
Go ahead, John.
No, but you gotta be good.
We've got a duel for these seconds. We're gonna give it to, uh, Mr. Merkel, I think. Mr. Rothenberger has stepped out of the way. So we've got a motion by Mr. Touch and a second by Mr. Merkel. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, calling the roll one more time.
Okay, Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Okay, that motion carries as well. Andy, does that wrap up everything you had for us?
Yes, it does.
Okay, we'll just hang tight unless somebody has a question about something coming up, okay? All right, looks like the next on the agenda is Mr. Merkel about the water and sewer budget proposal.
So wait, wait back up a second, Suzanne. Andy, do we need two motions?
Yeah, there should be one, there should be one motion to, I mean, I guess you could do it in, in, in the course of one motion, but there should be a motion to, um, adopt the resolution which, um, sets forth the agreement. And then there's usually a second motion and a vote to sign the agreement. Doreen, what?
Then do I have?
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, it sounds like we only did the first part of the resolution, so let's go forward and have the motion to authorize the signing of the agreement. How's that?
That's perfect.
Okay, so then, folks, may I please have a motion, uh, to go forward and sign the agreement discussed? The mutual agreement with Maiden Creek.
This is Ralph, I'll make the motion.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Mr. Touch.
This is Mark.
John Rothenberger will second.
Oh, John, Mr. Rothenberger jumped in and he is now the second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, so Doreen, would you please call the roll? Thank you.
Okay, Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Okay, that motion carries. Perfect, thank you, Doreen. But now, Andy, I think we are done with you at this point.
I think so.
That's okay, no worries. We're gonna move over to Pete Merkel with the water and sewer budget proposal, please.
All right, um, I went over this with Chris last Thursday, I think it was, and my memory's failing me. So I'm gonna give you the short version and then Chris can chime in. Uh, on the water, uh, our, our budget for 2021 is Uh, is that correct, Chris?
I'm skipping ahead. Hang on. I got the sewer in front of me first. Yes, 1,089,927.98.
Okay, and I just have a comment here, net zero, whatever the heck that means. What does that mean?
Which means we have a balanced budget.
Okay. The sewer budget is Uh, we have a, we have a little shortfall there, however, this kind of ties in with the next, um, item, the personnel item, because we're hiring a new person for the wastewater treatment plant. And, um, the labor for this person and the existing person, Tim, they're gonna be two labor, uh, labor expenses down there for three months. So, and that's the reason it's a little bit over. But I think Chris can fill you in on how we're gonna make that up.
Uh, actually, yeah, so that, it's a, it's a one-term, uh, shortfall for next year. Uh, and it would just come out of the, the, the sewer fund. Uh, I don't envision that as a in- incurred cost year after year, of course. So I don't think we need any, any type of sewer rate increase.
Do we, do we need to adopt these budgets tonight? Or is this just preliminary?
If there's no objection, it can't hurt to, uh, adopt them.
Chris, this is Denton. Putting in here, I'd like to repeat on what the, your proposed budget for the sewer will be for 2021, the final total.
You want, who, uh, Chris, are you gonna read it?
Sure, it's, uh,
So that's 1,107.
Correct. 6,96.18.
Again, the last part? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna get off your airwaves again.
All right, you wanna read off the, the water budget, Chris, also?
Well, you, you did the first time, but it's 1,089,927.98.
Okay, does Doreen have that?
Yes, I do.
So you want me to make a motion to adopt these numbers for the 2021 sewer and water budgets?
If you would be so kind, Pete.
I just did it.
Look at Pete being efficient.
Got a motion by Mr. Merkel to accept the water and sewer, sewer budget proposal. Do I have a second, please?
Mark Watkins, I'll second.
Oh, looks like Mr. Watkins beat Mr. Touch. Mr. Watkins. You haven't gotten one. This one's yours, all yours, brother. All right. So I've got a motion by Mr. Merkel and I've got a second by Mr. Watkins. Do I have any further discussion?
This is Denton Schucker again. I, I have a question on that, uh, final number. Are, are, we are not done with our sewer budget yet for 2021. Have you plugged in any numbers from us to you in this budget yet?
Uh, so yeah, what Denton's referring to is the Sewer Authority, uh, John Rothenberger, Pete, myself, were at the Sewer Authority meeting. The Sewer Authority agreed to a, if you looked on the, the budget, it was a single line item of, uh, major projects. The authority at that meeting agreed to fund those projects. That number is in our budget per their agreement.
Oh, okay, just, that was a preliminary budget that you were at. Our official budget is coming up next week. And, uh, I, I have some problems with what you're proposing as, as projects here. I can tell you one real quick. When there's a lift gate for a pickup truck is not part of the sewer operation and that should be under your general budget or mobile equipment. And there's some other things you have in there where you've just got a title and there's no definition to what they really are, just the title and the dollar sign. So some of that stuff is gonna have to be developed for my satisfaction. I don't know about the rest of the authority. I can only speak for myself. I'm not a pole.
This is Craig, just to clarify, the lift gate is for the sewer truck and is for the purpose of, uh, getting polymer for the subpress. So that is a sewer expense.
And how do you get polymer with the sewer truck?
We can pick it up.
Why don't you get it delivered?
We can pick it up cheaper and, and we get it in 55-gallon drums. We have the empty drums that we can take along back.
Okay, well, like I said, we meet next week, uh.
So I, I'm sorry, Denton, I, I was under the impression, and Pete and John Rothenberger can correct me. I thought the motion at the last authority meeting was to fu- defend, to fund $204,000 into this budget.
It, it was a preliminary budget and that preliminary budget did pass at the October meeting. I will.
So, so I would, I would recommend to council that we go with that. If it changes, so be it. But, uh, the authority did pass it by majority to fund the projects.
I just wanna be honest and upfront on my, my position.
Understood.
Well, Chris, this preliminary anyway, I mean, we have to advertise the entire budget and then ha- have it be available for inspection for 10 days.
Right, so this is, right, so this will be our, our adoption of a preliminary budget as well, so if things change, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Uh, if we have no further discussion at this time, if Doreen will call the roll, then we'll go from there.
All right, Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay, that, um, motion carries to accept the preliminary water and sewer bu- uh, budget proposal. Andy, do we need to make a, a separate motion to move forward and, um, advertise that at this time as well?
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's ready, I think it would be wise to, to make that vote to, um, because it's gonna have to be, unless you have another meeting before, in December. But if it's going to be ready and you wanna vote on it at the December 7th, I, I guess it would be meeting, then, uh,
Right.
14th. Make that vote now and give yourself enough time. It's only 10 days to have it, you know, open for inspection, but this is our last meeting before December 7th, I guess.
I, I think our meeting's December 14th, unless.
Oh, okay. Yep, I have it on that night, too.
We may have put another one in. We, we may have. I didn't look at my notes. We may have one, put one.
For December.
I have it on the 14th and the 14th.
So that, that should be something, Suzanne, we decide by the end of the night if we're gonna do something on the 7th.
Sure, and absolutely, we can, we can circle back around to that. So then I'll need a second motion, please, to prepare the water and sewer budget for, uh, advertisement.
John made the motion. Uh, Pete will second it.
Actually, Ralph, I think just made, Ralph made the motion over here, but you can second his, Pete. How's that?
Let Ralph, let Ralph make the motion.
Right, and then you can have the second, all right?
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Any further discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion on that point, then please, uh, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, call on the roll call.
Okay, Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone.
That's everybody. Thank you so much. Okay. Pete, do you have anything additional? Oh, 'cause you've got the next topic, but do you have anything on water and sewer?
Not on that, but I have, I have something on the personnel, yep.
Okay, then take it away, sir.
You may recall that Tim Cuck, our wastewater treatment, um, the head of wastewater treatment is retiring in March and, um, he's actually going out on medical leave before that. So we advertised for a wa- wastewater treatment plant operator. We interviewed three people. Can I, I can mention this fellow's name, right?
I wouldn't say why not?
Yeah, I, no reason not to.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're gonna hopefully, uh, approve his hi- hiring tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we talked to Matthew Irving. A nice young fellow, um, and Chris, basically, I guess Chris and Craig have been in negotiations with him for two weeks. He's accepted our offer. Uh, so he is going to start mid.
November 30th.
Mid, yeah, November 30th, um, that week sometime, correct?
Correct.
All right, uh, so we need a motion to hire this fellow, correct?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Just a little background.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Quick little background before, uh, for address to council, um, Matthew Irving is, uh, not new to the field, he has eight years' experience, um, treatment plant operations and, uh, all-around type things with, uh, water and sewer, I mean, with sewer. He has a degree in biology, which is, uh, very helpful in this field and, uh, uh, he interviewed very well on the phone, as well as person-to-person, and, uh, I, I'm very pleased with, uh, with the hire and, uh, I think he'll be a good addition to our team.
Sounds like a glowing recommendation, thank you. Okay, so we have.
Craig? Where, where was he working previously, can you say? Has he already given them notice?
Yeah, he, this is, uh, he was in Abington, which is down near Philadelphia, and that is where they currently live, but his wife is from Robisonia. They have two small children and they want to come back to this area before their children start school. He is actually from, uh, a western PA and graduated from shipping firm, so there, it's a big decision for him and his family and that's why Chris and I kind of been talking back and forth to him, because it was not just a big decision for himself, but also for his family. Um, they have, uh, secured a house in the area and, uh, hoping that this, he gets hired tonight.
So, and answer your question, Tammy, he has not given notice because we have officially not offered it, because council also approved first.
All right, thank you.
So John Rothenberger would like to second the motion on the table.
Okay, so we've got, the motion is, uh, the original motion was by Mr. Merkel, correct, and the second is by Mr. Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion at this time?
I do have a, I do have a question, this is Colin.
Sure, Colin, go ahead.
Questions, um, maybe we should have done this in the executive session, but I'll try to keep it vague. Uh, this, we're not gonna offer him a contract, are we? We're just, uh, as a reg- we're gonna hire him as a regular employee.
Correct.
And, uh, there's no contingencies, uh, if Tim changes his mind and wants to stay a year or so, um, do we have any fallback positions?
We have Tim's, uh, word that he's, he's getting out March, uh, fifth, fourth or fifth. Um, if, if, and this is be theoretical, if anybody would change their mind, we would have to take that into account. Um, based upon Tim's decision, he's one who told us, uh, and he's very eager to leave, so I don't think Craig or I have any doubt that that's gonna continue to be his, his plan.
Yeah, not at all, he's, he's looking forward to it.
Oh, he was planning on retiring in a year or so, but he's got some health issues.
Correct.
And that was the straw that broke the camel's back and he, he's not even gonna be around, um, my notes here, when, when exactly is he going on medical leave?
Pretty much.
I'm not getting too much into detail because of a personnel issue, yeah, he'll be out for a couple of weeks in December and January.
Yep, okay. That's why we were looking to overlap here, so we can get Matthew in to work with Tim for, you know, a, a good time before he goes out on his medical things and also when he returns.
And the final question, of course, this could always happen, if his current employer gives him a offer, he can't refuse to stay, are we going to keep the other candidates in mind?
We do have a number two candidate, yep.
We do, we do, correct, we have a number two candidate who we had, have not told of negative. Um, however, there's other circumstances that lead us to believe that there's not gonna be turning back for him either, but those are good questions, it theoretically going forward, anybody can change their mind at any time, so, right?
Okay, if we have no further, uh, discussion at this time, uh, we can go forward to the vote. Uh, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind, please, this is for the approval for the new hire.
Suzanne Touch? Yes. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Perfect, thank you. Well, congratulations to our new employee, that'll work out beautifully.
So, point of order, Craig, you'll let him know?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you for your hard work and your interviewing and getting us good candidates. Okay, moving forward, we've got Chris Young with the manager's report, please.
Uh, thank you Suzanne, so, an employee benefit, uh, question for council, um, is very routine, but needs to be approved if, if we wanna go forward. Um, there's some requests from the public work sector to add dental expenses to their benefits at the employees' expense, so it'd be no expense to the borough, but we would have to amend our healthcare policy accordingly. Um, I see no issue why we should not and already told the, the borough employees that we would address it tonight. If anybody on council feels that that would not be a good idea, uh, we need to know before we would go further, and this is our open enrollment time, so we have to decide, uh, quickly if we're, if we would decide not to do this. So again, it would be offering dental at the, the cost to the employee, there would be no incurred cost to the borough.
Do we have an approximate cost on that, Chris?
For the borough, zero.
No, for the employee.
Uh, family, I believe, is ninety-ish dollars and, uh, for a family and a single is, uh, twenty-ish dollars per month.
Thank you.
Chris, do we need a motion on that to move forward with that?
I don't, Andy, do you think that's a motion worthy?
But to, to amend our, uh, our plan?
Well, it, it, yeah, well, that's true, it would be, so if it is amendment, we wouldn't need a motion, that's true, yep.
Okay, can I have someone to move forward with a motion to allow amendment to the employee benefits to include dental, um, at the cost of the employee?
John Rothenberger will make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second, please? Look at that. You are quick, you are jumping right in there, Mr. Rothenberger's got the motion, Mr. Watkins has the second, any further discussion?
Suzanne, I just have one, I just have one quick comment, this is Colin.
Sure, of course.
I've been saying for years that that should be an option and I think it's going fo- not going, not change the budget, but I think that should be a expense paid by the borough. Every, uh, every insurance plan I've ever had included dental, at no additional cost, but that's just my comment.
Right, I think that we, uh, that's part of the benefits that we talk to the police about well, as well, that we negotiate with them. So that can be a consideration moving forward with the police negotiations. Because those two pieces go together, I think, if I remember correctly, Chris, don't our employee benefits, um, mirror those of the police, is that not right?
The, well, the police, uh, have a deductible on their policy that allows them to have dental. Um, this is kind of the reverse procedure, um, rather than, uh, the employees being payroll deducted for it, they would pay it direct, so.
But same outcome, basically.
Yes.
This is John, is the participation rate gonna affect the cost?
No.
Okay. Um, I, I, I support what Colin is saying, as far as the cost to the borough, um, I, I'm not sure that this year is the year to do that, if we, uh, look at how much, or what the participation rate is from, uh, the borough employees, I think that would be a, a good lead into potentially discussing that for next year.
Great, Chris, if you make a note of that and we'll keep it in mind for our budget discussions for next year, okay?
So noted.
Perfect, okay, so, I apologize, did we have a motion and a second, I thought we did? Because we had a discussion, so we've got a motion and a second, and if no further discussion, then if Doreen would be so kind as to call the roll.
Okay, Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone.
Thank you, that mo- that motion carries, thank, okay, thank you, everybody, um, Chris, moving on to the zoning ordinance review?
So thank you, council, for considering the previous, the zoning ordinance review is just a, a heads up. Uh, earlier this year, we talked about a number of ordinances that needed to be reviewed and considered for change. Zoning ordinance is, uh, by, kind of default, by talking to the, the, uh, code committee, the number one that they would like to focus on, there's been a number of variances that have come through. Um, and I got some way in from the planning commission, as well as our engineers, um, on some, uh, potential changes, so if anybody on council has suggested changes on the zoning, uh, I'll be the one stop, send them to me, I will mark it up and then we can send it to council. For a potential review, I would estimate February, March timeframe. Uh, if everybody recalls, the zoning ordinance is a big, big deal to change, so in order to keep it up to date, I encourage everybody to take a look at their current zoning ordinance, which is on the website. Um, and give me any feedback that they, of changes, either additions, subtractions, modifications. That's it for that, just an FYI.
You'll be getting my recommendations for the sign ordinance, okay?
Perfect, thank you, Pete.
I'll hold my tongue right now.
Thank you, Pete. So, the, the sign ordinance is one, one topic, the, the burned-out structures that we just experienced in Locust Street is another topic. Uh, our current zoning ordinance requires seventy-five percent, or anything that's demolished more than seventy-five percent has to be reconstructed to current code, which, God forbid, there's a, a fire in a very populated, uh, high-density area, it would prevent the houses from being reconstructed exactly as they are today. Uh, instead, they would have to conform to all zoning, which would prevent a lot of building. Um, and there's, there's one or two other things that have come through that, uh, people wish council would consider, so all those will be put into a packet and sent to council, uh, so if I could have those in by the end of the year, by January, I'll re-summarize, send it out, and then we can start by committee on, on what uh, council would decide to be amended.
Okay. Chris, can we move on to the MedEd LED program, please?
Absolutely, so, last council meeting, I believe Mark Watkins brought up the fact that our lighting for the streetlights were going up twenty thousand dollars, which wasn't true, it was just reflecting the actual costs that, uh, over the years have been escalating. Um, and, uh, I had said we are pursuing a LED program at the time. Uh, since then, MedEd, ha- had they had some personnel changes and a new person, Tanya Cruz, I believe, is the person that's, uh, uh, helping us, we have a proposal to change a majority of the lights in the borough from the current light, which is the high, or sodium vapor light, to LED. The cost is pretty much incurred, well, not pretty much, it's all incurred by MedEd, as long as we meet certain criteria, that the lights have to be over twenty or thirty years old, uh, and council has to approve it, of course. Uh, there's no cost, what happens is, MedEd then charges us per light at a reduced rate from what we're getting now. Um, the, if council approves this, it would be roughly a twenty thousand dollar savings per year to convert a majority of our lights from sodium vapor to LED. I say a majority, I think there's two hundred and some lights in the borough, or three hundred and some lights in the borough, only two hundred and some actually qualify for this at this time. Um, to replace the non-qualified lights is roughly three hundred dollars a light, so it gets a little expensive if you would wanna replace them early. Uh, my recommendation to council is, we go ahead with the plan that removes every light that's qualified and there are five lights that, Bobby put a lot of time into this, uh, looking to make sure it made sense, there are five lights randomly throughout the borough that might have been replaced by MedEd over the years that would also make sense to replace, even though there's a cost to it. The LED lights are white, the current lights are the orange-yellow, uh, so our feeling is having one in, in a block that is orange while the rest are white doesn't make a lot of sense, so to convert those would be roughly thirteen hundred dollars, um, to convert those five or six lights. Uh, and then the payback, obviously, twenty thousand dollars a year is pretty substantial. So I just, I just need a motion from council to go ahead and do it. The most, the most obvious impact, other than the cost savings, is you will see, most of the lights are in the borough that, that are the yellow-orange go to white LED.
John Rothenberger would like to make that motion.
Mark Watkins, second.
So I've got a motion by Mr., um, Mr. Rothenberger and a second by Mr. Watkins. Um, do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm always nervous when someone's gonna give me something for nothing. Are you sure there's nothing we're missing here?
Uh, no, I completely agree, Mark, so when I was talking to her, basically what they're doing is they're charging us a higher rate than if we would place it ourselves, so if we would go out and find, uh, lights and try to do it over twenty or thirty years, um, we're gonna be paying more in the long run for the exact same light, because they, they mount it, they do the engineering and they replace them in the future. But these are owned and operated by MedEd, so we're basically leasing it. The net-net, though, is we're leasing the ones that we have now.
Oh, okay, yeah. And how many were the extra ones you were going to replace?
Thirteen, thirteen-hundred-seventy-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
No, how many lights?
Oh, five.
Okay, and I just did some quick math, it's about eighty-seven dollar savings per light per year, so, let's see, that's four hundred dollars per year, so in a couple of years, they're paid for themselves, three years, you're, okay.
Hey, Chris, did you ever work everything out with, um, the organization that we were getting our electricity through, who's to be looking for the best deals for us?
Yeah, I'll talk to you offline on that, Tammy.
Okay, is that still an ongoing issue?
No, uh, it's resolved.
Good.
And that, that's unrelated to the, for every breath of council, that, that's unrelated to the MedEd, uh, pole lighting.
Okay, the only other comment that I would have, I don't mean to monopolize, but it is a, always a pet project for me. Um, I mean, if in three years it looks like they pay for themselves, you might wanna start thinking, we might wanna start thinking about the remaining lights.
So, agreed.
They're gonna last for the three years.
Ag- agreed, um, what the, well, that, that, that's a little bit bigger financial impact, it's a thirty thousand dollar, um, impact to change those lights, so, our feeling, general feeling was, we'll get these converted, then look at what the next phase would be and when they expire, if they're within a year or two of expiring, then yes, but if they're ten years, the cost goes up substantially, because it, it's prorated by the amount of time that the light is there.
Okay.
So, so I would assume that everything on Main Street is gonna be, Main Street and six-sixty-two, they were all rela- they were not, they were replaced, correct?
They actually were not, that was my impression, too, but that's not correct. The, the Rich, Richmond Street is going to remain pretty much where it is. Spring Street, Cambridge Court, Fleetwood Avenue, Greenway and Walnut Town Road are the ones that are the newer ones, uh, that we're not replacing yet. As a, as a general brush, those are the streets, uh, that are, are not going to be changed.
Chris, last time we talked about this, they were gonna do like banks of like fifty at a time, are they still planning on doing it that way, so?
We, we had to, we had to rank them at fifty at a time, because they, they, they assign these into projects. Then they decide, they, MedEd decide if they're going to do the entire borough at once or take certain projects. This whole thing is going to take months to work out, they have to send it to their engineering, their engineering comes back with feasibility, um, We already selected the lights and the geographical area. Then they would decide if they're going to do them all at once or assign it by projects of the 50. So we have five zones of roughly 50 each, the last zone being less than 50.
And it could be a while until they're all finished. I mean, we could potentially be a year out, and they may not all quite be finished, correct?
They gave me an estimate of six months before we start to see progress. And then it's up to them. If they decide that this is worthwhile, they might just come out and send the borough, and it would be done a relatively short period. But depending what else is going on, it could drag another six months after that.
Yeah, okay. Good enough. That's what I remembered last discussion that we had.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second for the MedEd LED lighting program. So if we've got no further discussion, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll.
Suzanne Tetch?
Yeah.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Tetch?
Yeah.
Alan Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that would be everyone.
Perfect. Moving forward, Chris, I think you've still got the floor with the community center lighting?
Yeah, exact same subject, a little bit more involved. As we were talking about this, it came to mind that the community center is pretty much filled with the old T-12 bulbs, which are the very old fluorescent, which are actually regulated pretty heavily. It's even more difficult to get rid of them at this point. Talking to Bobby primarily, these lights are failing, and we frequently have to replace ballasts and whatnot. So I started looking into what it would be to convert the community center interior lighting to LED. We had two different engineering or electronic firms come out, give us estimates. There's a whopping 256 lights in the community center currently. And we are, each light, this gets, this is where it gets a little bit more complicated because MedEd's pretty easy. Every night the lights come on. In a community center, not every single light is on for the whole day. The hallways are on from 7:00 AM to 9:00 or 10:00 PM. Some of them are on 24/7. Some of them are on less. By our calculation, it's roughly $41 per lamp for light fixture that we would save by replacing it if they're on for 14 hours a day. And so what we tried to do was bias the program and replace the LED lights that are most heavily used first. So we have it as a Phase 1 program of replacement, so it's like a maintenance program, where we would replace 107 lights on the first floor, another 27 in offices and bathrooms, police room, etc. Second floor hallway light, another 15, a grand total of $19,796 for the replacement. My guesstimate is this is a three-year payback, that we would save enough money on these that after three years, we would pay it back. Then we have a second estimate of $31,000, no, $26,000 for the exact same replacement. And then we would have a Phase 2 where we would go and do the exterior lights and some of the lesser-used lights. And our, both our electricians agreed that this is a workable plan and makes sense. So there's no budget for it, but are talking to the finance team a little bit in detail with a three-year payback, it only makes sense to spend the money now because you're going to be getting it right back. So we would need council approval, though, to start the replacement program. $10,000 would be in 2020's budget, and $10,000 would be in 2021's budget. Then we would decide if we want to do Phase 2 closer to the end of 2021.
Okay. Do you want to have a motion from anybody regarding the community center lighting proposal to move to LED on a phase-in basis?
Mark Watkins moved.
I've got a motion by Mr. Watkins. Mr. Tetch, do you have a second?
I'll second it. Thank you.
So I've got a motion by Mr. Watkins, and I have a second by Mr. Tetch. Do we have any further discussion at this time?
Hey, Chris, did you factor in the reduced maintenance cost of the LED lights versus the T-12s?
Excellent question. No, that's a bonus.
That was another thing when we redid the schools, when we factored in, maintenance is around half. And of course, replacement costs and all that work involved. I guess the other thing I would ask is, are they complete replacements? Or have they gotten to the point where the form factor can just fit into the same type of fixture as you currently have?
Man, Mark, you are full of great questions and great answers. So talking to Bobby and the electricians, the, somebody has me on another there. The maintenance of these is incredibly small. The maintenance of the other ones is not only cumbersome and expensive. We're also dealing with the ballast. And if Mark Crosley from the fire company is still on, and John Rothenberger can attest, the ballast are also fire hazards. What the new proposal is, is these are actually, they rip out all of the fixtures, all of the ballast, only let in the housing and four screws and two wires, and this whole unit goes in as a replacement, like a replacement window.
Great.
It is. Yep. There's almost nothing that remains. In fact, there is nothing remains except for the interior. And this quote actually includes the hazardous material removal of the old bulbs.
And we do spend quite a bit of time in the community center every year, replacing ballast, replacing bulbs, and that will be eliminated. And then I think that's, Mark, what you were kind of referring to, those hours, correct?
Yep, yep. And I guess as you phase it in as well, Craig, by the time you pay the next bill, you've already saved some from the first year of...
Absolutely. Yep, yep.
Sound like a win-win. So we've got a motion and a second. If we don't have any further discussion, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind going forward with the roll call?
Okay. Suzanne Tetch?
Yeah.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Tetch?
Yeah.
Alan Boyer?
Yeah.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that would be everyone.
Okay, that motion carries as well, Chris. Start to make that happen.
Yep. But hopefully by the next time you come in for a real council meeting, we'll have all new lighting in the building. The cafeteria, by the way, is Phase 2. That's relatively new lighting and not need, they're actually the T-8 bulbs. So we're not replacing them right away. Just, I didn't mention that the first time around.
I do a quick question, Chris. This is called.
Yes?
What about the gym?
The gym already has new lights in that were put in by Serge, and they are LED already.
Sounds good. Thanks. That's what I thought. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Chris, you're still up with the Santa parade, please?
Save the best for last, right? So the Y had called and said they are not doing a full-fledged Santa parade for the obvious reasons. They had asked what my opinion was of a Santa parade in general. I had said, I'm pretty sure council would not like to have a grouping of, you know, encouraging grouping of people anywhere for the obvious reasons. So the fire company stepped in and said, hey, by the way, back in Easter, we took Easter bunny around every, just about every street in the borough. The Y said, wow, that's a phenomenal idea. So the Y and the fire company are linking up to do a tour of the borough. I hate to, it's not a parade. It's a couple of trucks going up and down each street. It will take place December 12th at the times that the Y and the fire company will post on their social media and will assist by putting it on the website unless council objects.
Hey, Chris, just food for thought. If you guys would need another truck or, I mean, I would volunteer my time for Public Works to help out with that.
Appreciate that. Yep. I think the only thing they're doing is a Y truck saying, hey, we're selling coupons for hoagies. And then the fire company with Santa, but I'll mention that if they're so interested.
I have visions of Santa sitting in the back of the leaf blower like Tanky used to.
We have some better pieces to put Santa on than the leaf blower, I would think.
Chris, do we want to throw out some of those, what you call it, the teddy bears that we have from the rec board?
Ah, I can mention it. The problem with that is there's not enough to go around. So it would be, you know, hit and miss.
Yeah. I don't know how many are in the community center, to be honest. I don't remember.
There's maybe 100 or 200. And if every, I'll tell you, I was part of the Easter, and every single child in Fleetwood was out to wave the Easter bunny. So I would hesitate to try to get 1,000 teddy bears to throw out to everybody.
Yeah, no, you're right, of course. Okay, so do we need to, we don't need, do we need to vote or do anything on that?
I don't think so. It's not an official parade unless council has questions or concerns.
Nope, sounds good.
All right.
Moving along to Craig Conrad with the Public Works Report.
Yeah, I sent out the report on the Locust Street water main project. I did final paving today, cleaning up a little bit. They should be starting to move equipment out, and that project should be coming to a close tomorrow. The Vine Street lift station project, upgrade project, had just started today. They basically just moved in, started doing a little digging, but they'll be working out there probably for the next, probably about a month. And that project should be complete as well. A bunch of other things. We cleaned a bunch of cat's basins out, did some patchwork, and we're getting, doing big cleanup now until December 17th, getting ready, geared up for the winter season, see what the old man winter brings us this year. It wasn't much last year, but we're getting prepared for that, and things are moving on. Penn bid, Chris, do you want to start with that, or you want me to go into that, the changes?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, on the Penn bid, bid that was out for the water projects, for the large water projects, there was an oversight on a date on the initial bid. It didn't get changed on the cover page on Penn bid. There was a date change on the pre-construction meeting that did not get reflected on the Penn bid itself on the cover page. And that caused a little bit of confusion with some contractors on the meeting date. So in order to clean that up, we thought it would be a good idea to just take that bid off and then rebid the project, open it back up again with the same type of spec. So am I explaining that correctly, Andy?
Yeah, I think, I don't have anything to add to that. That's exactly what happened.
So it's back up. The correction has been made. It's back up for bid, and then the timeline will be the same as it was before.
Well, it's a slight change because we were hoping to have them open by now for this meeting.
Correct. It'll be December.
We're now in December, opening of the bids. Penn Vest pushed their dates accordingly. But there's no hurry for this project. So it was, after consultation with Andy and Arrow and Craig, we all agreed that it would be best just to restart and have the bids opened prior to the December council meeting, and then December council meeting, it would be approved, particularly since this is a $3.5 million potential project. We don't want to be screwing around with it.
So we have addressed this, this is John, we have addressed this with Arrow, how the error occurred, and have expressed our displeasure about that.
Yeah. They're well aware, and they are eating the cost of the second round here.
Craig, do you have anything else to report on?
I was just going to say, unless you have any other question for me, I have nothing else outside of my report. And I just hit the highlights for the meeting, okay?
Craig, when are you going to...
Can I go back to that Arrow item or to the Penn Vest thing? Do we need to re, do we need another motion to make that happen?
I don't think so. I mean, the project hasn't, the project hasn't changed at all. There's no, there weren't any substantive changes. The bid is the same. It's just the dates that changed. We've already, we've already voted to advertise it. So I don't, I don't think a second motion to advertise would be required.
And Craig, I have a question. When are you planning to stop doing leaves?
December 17th, unless there's still a lot out there and we have to continue. But our target date's December 17th.
Okay. They're not coming down as fast as usual.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll see. We'll play that by year. If we have to, we have to leave it on, and the weather's still good. I mean, we'll continue, but our target date's the 17th.
Good enough. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, then, moving forward, we've got the next item on the agenda is the approval of the bills. Mr. Rothenberger?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the October 23rd bills that were paid.
Do we have a second, please?
This is Ralph. I'll second it.
We've got a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll then, please.
Okay. Suzanne Tetch?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Tetch?
Yeah.
Alan Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
That's everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Doreen.
I'd also like to make a motion, like to make a motion...
I was going to say that motion carries.
Sorry.
That's all right. That's okay. We've got a motion by Mr. Rothenberger to pay for the, to approve the current month bills. Do I have a second, please?
This is Ralph. I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Tetch. Do we have any further discussion, please? Okay, Doreen, if I could trouble you one more time, please.
Okay. Suzanne Tetch?
Yeah.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
He's off now.
Oh, that's right. 8 o'clock, yeah. Ralph Tetch?
Yeah.
Alan Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Andy, do we, I don't know if we still have a quorum because Jimmy's not here and Mark is not here.
Let me count.
Right? Do we have four?
We, I think we have four. John, Pete, Ralph, you, Colin.
Okay, yeah, we're good. Just making sure. Just want to make sure we didn't have any issues. Okay, so then that motion carries as well. And I think the last item on the agenda would be acceptance of the last month's meeting minutes. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion. It's Ralph.
I have a motion by Mr. Tetch. Do I have a second, please?
It's Pete.
Thank you, Pete. So I've got a motion by Mr. Tetch and a second by Mr. Merkel. Any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, you're closing in on the last things you have to do this evening. If you wouldn't mind, roll one more time.
Suzanne Tetch?
Yeah.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Ralph Tetch?
Yeah.
Alan Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Yes. Yes.
And that's everyone.
Perfect. That motion carries. The only last bit of business, I think, unless somebody has something else they want to discuss.
I sent out.
I have one item. Go ahead, Pete.
Okay.
Sent out a rendering of Spade's Nursery on the property where the Chinese restaurant was. And it was just, I was working with him on another job, so I just asked him to do it. And the ballpark price is $35,000. Of course, that's too much and it would have to go into the full-blown engineering and it would cost $135,000. So it's just a, it's just out there. The only way we could do that at that price is to get donations. So maybe someday, someday.
Yeah, Pete. Yeah. I, I like the, I mean, it's a, it's a very nice concept and we constantly have Eagle Scouts that are going, hey, what about, what about, what about? So it is possible that we could use that as a concept and over the next couple of years, have a couple of Eagle projects to, you know, phase it in.
It might, you might be able to do it that way.
Or other projects, Rotary, Rotary, Lions, Eagle, volunteer, community volunteers. I really like that, that design and what it would look like on that corner. So.
If we allowed Spade to put a sign there, you think they would donate some of the?
Odds possible. I, I don't know how we could work it, but you know, it's just the beginning. If we live, if we live long enough, maybe someday.
Okay.
If you would want to do something on a smaller scale, just to dress it up a little bit, I mean, we could take out some of that stone and put some topsoil and at least get some, some green there, you know, as far as Public Works, maybe in the springtime, just, just food for thought. We couldn't do the full-blown, obviously, the landscape plan, but we can at least dress it up just a little bit from what it is now, if, if you guys would be, you know, willing to consider something like that.
We could come up with a plan with, with some perennial or something that we can put in some, that would, you know, not need a lot of maintenance that might look nice, like a, not a ground cover, not real low.
Yeah, if you look along, along Franklin Street at that, that work there, the contractor planted the plants, but we did the stony and we did the landscaping work there. So take a look at that. We're not pros, but you know, it's, it's not like your picture, but would certainly be a little bit nicer than what's there.
Maybe Doreen's husband could help us too because he is a pro.
There you go.
You can ask him, Pete.
Yeah. Okay. Anyway, it's just, like I say, I was working with him on another job. This is just a thought. So we'll, we'll work on it.
Okay. I think somebody else had piped up with something to talk about. We can go down the line.
It was Denton.
Yes, Denton, go ahead.
Just if you or any of your acquaintances or relatives are interested, the sewer authority will be losing our recording secretary for 2021. We have not at this point found a replacement. We've had several refusals, but if you have any acquaintances or relatives or friends that, that you're not really that fond of, that you want to recommend as a recording secretary, we're, we're looking for someone.
Okay, that's noted. Anybody else have anything? Tammy, you have anything?
Well, I did, but now I have forgotten what it is. So I'll, I'll just have to wait. So just move on because I don't know what it is.
Okay. As, as part of the rec board, we did have a Halloween house decorating and pumpkin carving contest that was pretty well received and we got a few entries, some really clever things. And we'll be announcing those winners shortly and they'll be getting some gift cards, the winners will be. But it was a nice, it was a nice event and hopefully we can do it again next year. I think folks really liked it.
I'd agree with you, Suzanne. Thank you all for doing that. People did like doing it. I actually think Halloween was fun. People sat out and, you know, were there to, to, with tables to give out candy and, and I know in our neighborhood, we all got together afterwards then and sat around a fire and I, I, it turned out, it, it I, I thought it was really very community oriented. So it turned out great.
I did have one question or one comment. This is Colin.
Sure, go ahead.
I was wondering, I don't think this is in place, but I was wondering if we have a policy in the borough going forward, this might be more of an issue about setting up charging stations or what our policy is on charging stations of electric vehicles using borough resources. That's going to be more of a use going forward when the use of electric vehicles increase.
I, I guess we'll have to monitor what available resources that we have to make sure that they're not being utilized in that way, but that would be a point as electric cars become more popular. Just as many people do wherever they are, they find a plug to plug a phone in and charge it, right? Same kind of idea, I suppose.
Well, I always, I always thought you would, you needed a special adapter or special charging station to charge electric vehicles, but I was just walking down the road this past week and I just happened to notice one was plugged in using what I think may have been a regular, regular outlet. I don't know if that's just by the way it looks or not. I'm not an expert in that.
Eventually, I mean, if it's the way things go, we'll have to put some in the parking lot. I don't think we're there quite yet, but yeah, going forward, that's going to be a topic.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add this evening?
Suzanne, this is Doreen. I think prior there was discussion of deciding if we needed another meeting in December with the budget.
Ah, yes. So Chris, what do you think?
So, uh, well, the budget, we just approved the, the, the general budget, so that's completely done. The water sewer is tentative that will be advertised. My, my feeling is do the December 7th and, and that might be the end of the, oh, wait, no, no, never mind. We have to keep it on the 14th just because of the bills and whatnot. I was, I was getting selfish and thinking, hey, we could actually do a December 7th meeting as the last one for the month. But because of bill paying, that would become cumbersome. So disregard. I don't think we need a, I don't think we need a.
Right, I was gonna say, yeah, let's get rid of the, the December 7th meeting and just keep the second meeting on and then that will be that.
Correct.
Do we need to do, Andy, we don't need to do a motion for anything like that because we'll just keep it on the calendar just in case something changes, right?
Just in case, right. If you want to, if you want to post something online or, you know, stick, stick something on the website saying that we're not going to have the December 7th meeting, that's all you would need to do.
Yep, will do.
So we're going to have one meeting on the 14th.
That's it, right now?
And Andy, this is, this isn't the year for the January, right? We do not have to do the first Monday in January type thing.
Right. For boroughs, it's only even numbered years.
Right.
Reorganization. So we're, we're safe this year.
Perfect.
Townships do it every year.
Okay. Well, if we've got nothing further, the only thing that's left on the agenda would be someone to make a motion to adjourn. Now, don't all rush at once.
This is Ralph. I'll make the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Touch. Anybody going to bring up the rear?
Oh, wait, 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 real quick.
What?
Pause. Wait, when we adjourn, because everybody's going to sign off, if I can keep the personnel team on here just for five minutes, which would be Suzanne, Pete, and actually I'm going to ask Ralph as a substitute. If we can just keep you three on, quick personnel team meeting, that'd be great.
Sure. Not a problem.
All right. Sorry for interrupting. Continue.
That's okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Touch. I don't think I had anybody come in with a second yet.
Pete.
Okay, Pete's the second. Any further discussion? Doreen, take it home.
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Yeah.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Alan Boyer?
Yes.
And John Rothenberger?
Affirmative.